Welcome. Good afternoon to the first of our three webinars in this series offered for managing remote work. Please note, we will be recording this session today. You can keep your camera off if you'd like, but feel free to actively use the chat throughout the webinar. I have a few colleagues on the line with me today as well who will help me to chat and bring questions forward if we have some. My name is Becky Young Love. I'm a leadership development professional on the training and organizational development team in main HR. I have the pleasure and privilege of working with so many amazing leaders across the University of Florida. Many of you I know, I've recognized many names on the call today in a range of different ways, including teaching our courses and leading programs, facilitating and individual leadership coaching as well. And I'm excited to be able to offer this series, which is really aimed at coming alongside you as a manager and leader as we strategize the workforce of today and really plan for the future of tomorrow. So today's focus will be on exploring options. And this question comes to mind, is remote work right for anyone on my team or everyone on my team? How do I know? You know, there are many things to consider. And our goal for today's webinar is really to provide kind of a framework for you to think about as you explore these options, keeping in mind that, you know, one of the most important aspects through all of this is that we are learners, right? There's never usually a one approach, and we certainly always are learning things as we go. And as we're learning, we're finding out more about, you know, what individual needs people have to be their best selves at work, right? And what systems maybe work better than others, given the nature of our work or the people that are doing our work, and learning how to, you know, adjust and adapt when things don't work so well. So rather than throwing the baby out with the bathwater, as they say, maybe coming back and rethinking some ways that we can get better results. And really, the list could go on and on, right? It's this approach of really having a growth mindset and being open to considering what factors may be limiting us, and just willing to work through those for the benefit of the greater gator good here at the University of Florida. So to get us started on this topic, let's consider some of the factors related to why we're even having this conversation today, right? As many of you are very familiar, right? The last couple of years have been incredible, you know, between April and September of 2021, more than 24 million American workers quit their jobs, right? According to the US Bureau of Labor Statistics, that's a huge number, right? And the pandemic has really revolutionized a workplace for us and just accelerated an already growing trend that we knew was out there to offer more flexible work arrangements. So it's sort of hard to hard to ignore at this point, isn't it? And according to the data scientists at Ladders, which is a job search company, a quarter, 25% of professional jobs in North America will be remote by the end of 2022. Pretty crazy, huh? And this will continue to increase as we move into 2023 and beyond. So why should we consider remote and hybrid work options here at the University of Florida, right? There has been a real rise in job burnout, and it's at an all time high across our country. According to the American Psychological Association's Work and Wellbeing Survey, 79% of the 1,500 employees they surveyed experienced work-related stress right in the month before the survey. Many of us can relate to that, I'm sure. Three in five said that work-related stress have caused them to have a lack of interest, motivation, and energy at work. So it's really impactful, right? And I know for me, you know, when the pandemic first hit, and we were told like, everybody's gonna go remote on our team, it was a quick kind of shift move to everybody goes home, and you're now working from home. And not unlike many of you, probably, I was really thrown off by that quick shift with no time to prepare or think through anything. The abruptness of it was really hard to adjust to, but after some time and some trial and error, I know I started to feel more productive in managing myself, like, okay, I can get through this and do this. And there are even some surprising benefits, you know, a few weeks in, I remember I realized that, you know, there were some benefits I would have never even discovered prior to COVID, if it wouldn't have hit us in that way, you know, my commute at that time was over an hour, which I agreed to, I knew it was part of the deal. But the time that I saved working remotely in the morning and the afternoon gave me so much more daylight to enjoy time with my family, right? And I was able to start going on walks when it was still light outside with my kids. Before remote work, I, not unlike many other working moms, had to squeeze in, you know, things like laundry and dishes before and after a long workday. It was so relieving to me to be able to just like toss in a load of laundry in the morning or load up the dishwasher on my lunch break. I suddenly had time for some of these small tasks. They seem small, but they can really add to your stress level at the beginning and end of a workday. And I was amazed at the impact of some of those small things and how that impacted my wellbeing and my ability to really thrive in that environment. And as an added bonus, I didn't know this, didn't even realize it, but suddenly I was able to start enjoying a sunrise and a sunset from my home. I didn't even realize that was missing from my life, but once it was there, I was able to really increase my level of gratitude and joy as a result. And according to the 2021 State of Remote Work Report from Owl Labs, 90% of the 2,000 full-time workers that they surveyed said that they were more productive or as productive when they were working remotely. And 74% of them said that working from home is better for their mental health. 84% said that working remotely would make them happier, right? So there's lots of benefits that we saw from this quick shift. Now, there are different perceptions of work productivity. And in fact, some research is showing that there's a big disconnect between how leaders and management perceive productivity and how employees perceive it. And actually, they found that 65% of executives felt like productivity was really tied to being in the office. And that was from a 2021 PricewaterhouseCoopers report. And but from the employee's perspective, the physical office space was really seen as just a place where we might need to come together to collaborate or access equipment or documents or have meetings, right? And they felt that they could do the majority of their work very productively from an alternate work location. It's really no secret that more flexible work arrangements, among other things, right? Not just this one factor, are really shaping the workplaces of our future. And we aren't likely to ever go completely back, you know, what started as a temporary fix, you know, sort of letting the cat out of the bag. Now we have seen that that's propelled us to a state that we're in now, or really challenged to rethink or think more deeply about this new work paradigm. So, you know, really thinking about how can we match what employee, when employees see offered in that corporate job world, right? So that we can stay competitive in the job market. Many of you may be having a hard time filling positions, you know, finding people that are applying for the jobs even just getting the applicants or finding really high-quality applicants. And how about the value that this can add to a position or the organization by just allowing a little bit of flexibility, right? We've discovered a lot, and we want to use that to move us forward. Remote or hybrid work options have many managers and leaders, probably yourselves, considering, well, how do I provide flexibility in ways that are satisfying to the employee, but also productive for the team and positive for the culture as well, right? So we're going to use an active chat today. I see some of you are already putting some things in there, and that's great. Some of the things that you're thinking of as I'm talking, please continue to do that and even engage in dialogue with each other. We really welcome that. But we also want to hear from you at times. So in the chat, I'd love to hear from you, what are, let's start with that first question, what are some of the pros? And some of you've already noted some of them, right? Of that remote or hybrid work schedule that you've seen either for yourself or for others, you know, work-life balance, yes, time and money. Oh, and for me right now, right? Gas prices, woo, ability to focus on tasks, right? Yep, actually having less interruptions, less time on Archer, for sure, yes, being able to balance some. Oh, yes, Kim, right. Some cases, this has really freed up office space, which can be, you know, a hot commodity around here, right? Parking on campus, yep, absolutely. And I know many people have mentioned, you know, the the gas and the the impact on your vehicle, the mileage, right? All of that, the stress from traveling in the traffic or the commute, but also the impact to the environment, right? Oh, thank you, Jessica. Yeah, as a working mom, it is, it really does allow some flexibility that, you know, maybe we wouldn't have known before even existed, right? Now, we know there can be many positives, as a lot of you have have mentioned there. I like that one too, Ashia, a little more time to sleep in in the morning. I got that one as well. And I could even start start earlier still, actually get to work earlier, you know, start earlier, but also get a little extra sleep, which is better for our wellbeing too. Oh, that's right, Elizabeth, the pets. Yes, many people went and got pets during the pandemic, right? And then all of a sudden, we're like, oh, what do we do with this pet now that we have to physically travel back? You're right. So what are some of the cons, though? What are some of the drawbacks that you have seen either for yourself or others that have shown up as a result of that shift? Yes, Catherine, isolation, right? Technology issues, yeah, those can be can be a big impact, team building, communication, yep. New distractions, right? Maybe sometimes we have less distractions, but that might be replaced with new ones as well. Oh, internet, yes. Yes, a lot of people mention things around, you know, team engagement or connectedness, connectivity of the individuals. Absolutely, right? So there's a lot to think about here as we explore some of these options, right? It's important to consider that, you know, it's not only this problem that's right in front of us, that recruiting or retaining, or, you know, even this, some of these aspects around wellness that we're looking at, but also looking to plan for the future of our workforce, right? And so if we keep our eyes as leaders just on what is right in front of us right now, we might be able to address, you know, situations and problems that are right in front of us somewhat effectively. But what I would like to encourage us to think about today is how can we put our eye a little further out? You know, how can we think a little further ahead strategically that will help us to really think about how we can create agile approaches that we're going to need not just today, but well into the future as we try to strive to stay competitive and move toward this changing workforce. You know, as I said, this workplace arrangements or flexible work options is really just one aspect of this changing workforce. And so we're likely going to need to consider many other things as well. So in their book, Lead from the Future, the authors Mark Johnson and John Schuskowicz, they talk about how to turn visionary thinking into breakthrough growth. And they propose this approach called future back thinking and planning, which I thought was just a really interesting way to apply our strategic thinking and our concept of and really building a strong vision for the future into this place where we're at right now, exploring workplace arrangements, right? So the first question is to really think about, what is your vision for an ideal work system of the future? You know, what are you hoping to create? What does that mean as far as the impact to the type of culture that you want to really represent your team and your work? So important factors to really consider and think about. So as we're thinking toward this future state, what are some of the things that we have learned because of that quick shift to the remote work from the COVID pandemic? What have you learned or discovered that we maybe be able to think about applying in this design phase? Feel free to throw those into the chat. Yeah, that it can be done, that there, we had some mental limitations that we thought like, oh, this can't be possible. But it has shown us that we can work through some of those things, right? Yes, right, staff can learn new technologies. We can still be professional, right? Sometimes there's even increased productivity, exactly, which surprised many people. They were like, what? Yes. And there's this new like, well, now people are sort of looking for it, right? And if we found some satisfaction from remote work, we are sad to see it go completely away, right? Use of teams. Thank you, Mary Jane. Yes, a lot of folks have found that some of those instant and accessible ways to use technology to keep us stay connected. Absolutely. Yeah, right. When exactly like when it comes down to it, one of the things that I think has been most interesting to see kind of show up is that, you know, as managers, we have to manage, whether we're managing a completely in-office team or a completely remote team or some sort of a hybrid in between, it does go back to some of these consistent best practices around structure and communication, and ultimately, that culture of teamwork, right? But there's some new possibilities for how we can do our work, right? So your goal is really as a leader to gain clarity on your why, right? Why is it important to consider flexible work arrangements for you, for your team? Why is it important to the work that your team does? And to the future state that you're hoping to achieve? And as you consider your why, you know, we have to also remind ourselves that there isn't a one-size-fits-all approach, right, to work arrangements. We have to find what will work best for our team to really, whether that's considering a specific team, a larger unit, or even a larger department, it's important to put these things into the context of everything else that we're hoping to achieve, right? So not an aside, but actually part of your comprehensive approach to attracting and retaining top talent, right? To how we are evolving, really, that employee experience, right? As we look to this future. So you want to be aware also of what guidelines might have already been established above you in the organization. If you have leadership above you who has already thought through some of these things and put in place guidelines or parameters for remote work, you'll want to first consider these, right? Like, let's look at those and see what the impact is on your ability to explore other options. But even if leadership above you hasn't been supportive in the past, it may be worth a little time investment to get information about why, you know, some of those things might have been temporary. I know I've seen many places where leaders were like, no, absolutely, everybody's coming back. And now we're starting to reconsider some of those things, right? So there may be a little window there where you can find out whether they're open to reconsidering. And a lot has changed in the last year, right? Especially when it comes to recruitment and retention, among many other things, right? So for your unit and your team, maybe there are some ways that you can make a case if they're open to considering it. So exploring these options, as we'll talk about today, can help actually give you a lot of data, a lot of information that can support further discussion as you work to advocate for what might be best for your team. So with a focus on learning what works and what doesn't work as we develop our vision for our future workforce, we want to also be mindful that we're probably walking into this with some assumptions, right? So what are some of our assumptions? What are some of those lingering assumptions from that quick shift to remote work and considering your own mindset on what some of those limitations may be? And to the best of our ability as managers and leaders, we want to really try to test out those assumptions, again, with the focus on what we're learning as a result, right? So I'd love to hear in the chat, if any of you have heard of either personally, you might have some or heard of some assumptions about remote or hybrid work that people still have today, that that you've still heard kind of circulating around. What are some of those assumptions that you've heard? And as you're putting this into the chat, I'll share with you, you know, one that I've heard is, you know, teams can't problem solve when some people or all people are remote. That's one I've heard. And as some of you put, yeah, right, like, there might be this assumption that people will be unproductive or not actually working, time stealing, right? A lot of that. How do we ensure people are working if we can't see them? That is definitely top of the mind for many managers and leaders. Oh, thank you, Martha, too. Like, you might miss something if they're not in there. Yes, mostly are they working, right? Or maybe, you know, can we deliver a quality product or a quality service if we're all dispersed? Maybe I still have a lingering assumption on that. So any assumptions that you feel are in place for you or for your team right now, you know, it's okay to have them, recognize that they're there, you know, and then start to really kind of walk that out. Start small and build momentum. You know, if things haven't worked well in the past, that doesn't necessarily mean that they won't ever work well in the future, right? We had to make that quick shift to remote work, as I described in my personal example, right? Without really thinking through things. And so we learned from that. Yes, of course, we did. But we also now have all of that learning to apply to this space of saying, okay, where are there opportunities to explore and maybe put in place some systems for communication and structures for accountability that we can fall back on to help us to be more protective, productive. So those bumps and bruises that we had along the way, right? We still learned a lot. Many teams found that there were systems that they could put in place, like using teams, like using, um, walking, yeah, walking meetings. Oh, isn't it fun? Have any of you had the chance to do a walking meeting when you're virtual? If you haven't done that, that's a great thing to do. Like, you can actually, I've done this, you take your phone and go for a walk and have a meeting, and you're walking. And so I can be virtually on my phone, and you can be virtually on your phone, and we're communicating. And we're also getting a little exercise and getting a little sunshine, which is that vitamin D is good for all of us, right? So really trying to think about what we've learned and use that knowledge to help us to work toward that future state as well, right? So I think this is a really important piece to consider. I find in my work with individual managers that a lot of times, it feels very isolated, that you are alone, or maybe even we put pressure on ourselves, right? To sort of problem solve and go it alone. Like, I have to find all the prob, all of the solutions to the problems, right? But really, your job as a manager is actually to facilitate bringing the issues into the forefront. You don't necessarily have to have all the answers. And in fact, if you do, this can actually be limiting to unleashing the potential your team has to build a healthy hybrid work culture. Everyone really does have to be committed to this cause and be willing to work out the problems as you move along to find the best solutions. We actually need that full team commitment to move us forward. And as we explore this future planning state, this is not a one-time event or a discrete event. It's really an iterative process of exploring and envisioning and testing out the waters as you experiment. It's important to have an open mind, right? We want to be flexible and consider ways that we can adjust. So oops, that didn't work so well. We saw this downside. Okay, well, what could we do differently? Let's use some expansive thinking, let's problem solve and talk through it. We might need to adapt and change our approach slightly to get better results. Again, not necessarily throwing everything out just because it doesn't work the first time, but working through those issues, which as a as an aside, actually is also really helpful to strengthen the relationships on your team, right? There may be times where you need to completely pivot. Okay, we're, this actually was really unsuccessful, this attempt to do this piece of it, we need to pivot. And really with that focus on learning what works best for the individuals and the team as a whole, to deliver the quality of work that you need to deliver, and then continuing through that iterative process as you move forward. So let's like, take a look at some strategies that we can use to find what works best for the people on our teams and the work that we do. Remember, our goal is to find ways that are satisfying to the employee, right? We want them to be engaged and motivated, but we also needed to be productive for the team. And that impact, as many of you mentioned in some of your comments around what things have worked or not worked, right, on the culture, want to keep our eyes on this game. We want to have really all three of those aspects. And we're achieving this goal with that growth mindset of of learning what will work best in this new way. So we need to think about, you know, the people and the different aspects of the work that we do, both individually and collectively as a team, so we can achieve outcomes that we're looking for. Not every position, as I'm sure you all have have learned, is suited well for remote work, right? And not every person is either. So let's look at some ways that we can think through parameters that will help us determine the best way to move forward. So some factors or questions that you might want to consider. First of all, you might have to ask yourself, well, who is even interested in flexible work options? Is everyone interested in that? Only a few people, right? And for those that are interested, are they generally successful in performing their job duties right now? If you have someone who's really interested in a fully remote or hybrid schedule, but you've had some really significant performance issues, maybe you might have some preconditions that need to be met before considering options. Or maybe you're not open to considering options for that person in that position at this time at all. Not everyone, of course, is interested in a remote work option. For many people, when we were sent home quickly and had to work remote, they discovered that they actually perform better in a physical workspace. So how will you accommodate those types of arrangements as well into this larger puzzle, right? I ran into a colleague in the break room just the other day. And this person said, you know what, I actually would quit if you asked me to work fully remote. I didn't like it. I don't like it, and I'm not going back. So we do have to keep in mind those individual preferences and what works best for one person might not work best for everyone, right? And then we want to think more broadly about the work that our unit does, right? If you're thinking of a department, like more largely, or a unit or a team within, what functions can be or could be performed effectively remotely? Some, you know, types of work that work well in a remote or hybrid arrangement are jobs that require things like reading, writing, research, you know, working with data, anything that requires me to really just be me in the computer. Those are certainly tasks that I can do without being in a work, physical workspace, right? So ask yourself, you know, can all or some of these job requirements be done offsite without disruption to the flow and communication? That's one aspect. And then, of course, there are some positions that really just don't work well with remote or hybrid arrangements, right? And these are positions where maybe you have a client-facing position where you're really serving in service of a patient or a student-focused service, or physical-facing positions, like a technician or a maintenance-related job, right? Those don't, well, we actually can't perform many of those duties in a remote environment, right? It would be really hard for me to perform things like changing the light bulbs in a building if I am not physically in that building. We don't yet, this is why we're thinking about the workforce of the future, though. We don't yet have those capabilities. Who knows? One day, there might be a way for me to do some of this stuff through computerized technology. But for now, we don't have to worry about that. We do want to have physical people in spots. And, you know, for many of our student-facing groups, this is extremely important, right? If you need to be that person that is there to greet a student with your full body, with your face, and make them feel like they can come to campus at any time and access the services that you provide, that could be really important. And as you consider options, you know, keeping your vision for a workplace of the future in mind and thinking of what you're hoping to achieve by even exploring, right? What aspects of your team's work would be affected if you had a remote or hybrid arrangement for some or for all, right? For example, let's say your team's primary purpose is to support faculty such as these in fiscal responsibilities related to research, right? If we were to move to a hybrid work arrangement, would we want to be sure that maybe there was still a responsiveness to the support that we provide those faculty in person? Maybe that means we work out some sort of an arrangement where, you know, parts of my team are in the office on, you know, every single day we have coverage. That's how, that's how we provide that on our team. We say, okay, well, somebody has to be in the office every single day physically. And so we rotate things around. So not everybody is in every day, but that's a way to manage keeping someone there to support if there's a need in a face-to-face interaction. And then what does turnaround time look like for requests and things like that? And how will you manage those types of in-person requests? There's a lot to think through, right? And then also keeping in mind, you know, whoever you're working in service of, how will you know if they feel like their needs are being met? If their satisfaction level for the level of services that they that you provide is still intact if you move to a remote or hybrid arrangement, right? So we also want to consider the individual and collective people on the team, right? And thinking specifically about whether or not, you know, a person has the ability to work autonomy with little or direct report. Not everybody does, right? Some of us, this is a little bit harder, and it's actually better to be in present physical contact with others. And can they control their individual schedule and workflow? If they struggle to do that with an in-person arrangement, or maybe you've tried this out with some, you know, remote work in the past that we we had to do as a result of the pandemic, maybe you've already established, like, this was really challenging for this person. So before I'm willing to consider a hybrid or remote work arrangement, we need to talk about what can we do to, you know, address some of these concerns that bubbled up around responsiveness or ability to produce the desired results, right? And thinking about, are they reliable? You know, and are they self-disciplined regarding their work? What amount of their responsibilities maybe require face-to-face communication? And can that be done remotely? Or does it require that in-person presence as well? In an effective and not in an effective and ineffective management strategy that we actually saw pop up quite a bit when we moved to remote work during the pandemic, was increased micromanaging, or what people perceive to be micromanaging. We heard many stories, I know I have personally, from managers who, when people were sent home, you know, they were trying to, you know, with good intent of ensuring that people are working. they were trying to, you know, with good intent of ensuring that people are working, they did things like maybe watching for, you know, a green light to show that you're on, you know, on your computer or logged in, or requiring employees to turn in like minute-by-minute records of how they spent their day, right? If your vision for the workforce of the future is to have higher levels of engagement and motivation, if that is part of why you're interested in exploring these options, then you will actually accomplish the exact opposite by mandating accountability. So let's talk about some other ways that we can get the results that we want to achieve without demonstrating to others that we have to check up on every little thing to make sure that they are working, right? So instead of micromanaging, it's important to really be thoughtful about how we are setting the employee up for success and how we are measuring their performance, right? For this approach to be successful, we want to really kind of consider how we shift our focus from measuring accountability to actually measuring output and results. If we focus on the results, what is it that we would want to see? How would we want this person to be behaving in their job? Then we can shift our focus to that and worry less about whether or not they're spending every single minute of their remote eight-to-five day logged into a computer. I mean, do you really want to worry if, you know, my dog suddenly needs to go to the bathroom and I take five minutes to walk outside and take my dog to go to the bathroom? Well, guess what? When I'm in an office workspace and I need to use the restroom, I take five minutes and go use the restroom, right? So there, you know, we, we lose a lot of time in an office space doing things like chatting with colleagues in a lounge or, you know, taking a quick walk to get a break outside. So we focus in on these results and what you're really hoping to see is that output piece. It can take away some of that worry about whether or not somebody is working all the time, right? And this can be a little bit scary to explore at first, especially if you feel responsible for, you know, everybody working. But it's usually more about our own mindset as managers than it is about the employee's productivity. Start small and give yourself lots of room to practice and find what works best for you and for the employee. And instead of, you know, focusing in so much on those minute-by-minute increments of somebody's day, how about we establish some regular check-ins, like a regular cadence of check-ins where we can increase our communication from both sides, you know? Clear and consistent expectations, regular feedback, space to ask questions and share how things are going. Don't wait to see that it's not working to then have to address some of those problems. Like think about this ahead of time, right? And when you're experimenting with options, right? I think it can be helpful to keep in mind how any type of change impacts us in terms of our own, you know, emotional response. So when we have big change, there's usually this emotional component that comes along with it and that can really have an impact on our ability to think clearly and make decisions as well. So Dr. David Roth developed a SCARF model, which has really been helpful to me as I consider the impact of change on some of those more cognitive functions that we have. And this is based on neuroscience research. And the model really just helps us to consider the ways that we can minimize threats, and in this case for our employees, and maximize rewards. So instead of having that threat response come up where we're worried or afraid, that we want to more engage on that reward side of pleasure and joy and satisfaction in our interactions with others as we manage change and uncertainty. And they found that these were the most common factors that activate either that reward or threat response in social situations. So look, let's look at how that applies to us in considering remote or hybrid work options, right? The first one is status. And our statuses really are relative importance to others. And if we think about this in terms of exploring remote or hybrid work, right? I might be wondering, will my status on the team change if I have a hybrid schedule and I'm not in the office every day? Will my manager think less of me, that I am less productive, that I am not doing as much work as others if I'm not in the office every day? And how about our sense of certainty? This is our ability to predict the future. So as you are exploring some of these options, right? Structure will help you to provide more certainty to your employees on what they can expect. And then we also have our sense of autonomy, which is really important, is it's our sense of control over events, right? And so one way that you as a manager can help ensure that folks feel like they have a greater sense of autonomy is having that clear communication of expectations and feedback as well. And then we have relatedness, which is feeling safe with others. You know, how safe do I feel with others? And in this place, it's really about connectedness to the team, which many of you mentioned as, you know, one of the cons of moving to a more remote or hybrid work option. And this is an important piece to consider, you know, how are we still going to stay connected as a team? How can we problem solve around that and develop some strategies, some ideas around how we can stay connected as a team? If we are going to explore some of these options more long-term. And the last one is fairness. And this is really how we perceive our own equality, right? So if we think about this in the workplace environment of flexible work arrangements, right? How do perceptions come into play when some people are not present in the office? You know, does my manager tend to give more big projects or items that are, you know, more top of the mind to people that are right there physically in the office? Do I start to feel like maybe I'm not treated with the same level of professionalism because I'm not physically in the office? And this is something in our own mindset that we have to be really aware of as well. I know I was talking to my boss about this just the other day and he said, you know, I have to really think about it and be mindful of it because when people aren't physically present right there, they're not top of the mind. You have to be intentional about that piece, right? So what are some of the ways that a remote or hybrid work arrangement could impact one of these areas? Or have you seen impact some of these areas? I'd love to see in the chat, what are some of the ways that you have seen some of these things come up? And thank you for your comment around the losses of time or brain breaks, Tiffany. Were you referencing that in the space of like, people are taking less brain breaks? Or how were you thinking of that?
Yes, important. Favoritism can come into play, so that's another aspect to be mindful of. Others feeling that it's not, not fair or not equal.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing that, Andrea. Yeah, it's, it's something to really work through, right? And, and you have to make some decisions around, you know, where do we have the space to have these conversations? So that we can work through some of these things? And are we all committed to doing that? And if there isn't a high level of commitment or we haven't got some of those basic structure elements in place, then it may not be effective for your team. It may actually create more issues.
Exactly.
Lots to think about. So of course, you know, with some of these examples, just like you said, you know, employees feeling that there is favoritism. Let's take that one as, as an example. We have to think proactively about some of these issues as leaders, right? What are some ways that we could plan proactively to prevent some of what's within our control? Of course, people's perceptions are always going to be, you know, out of our control to some degree, but there are things within our control that we can do that impact their perception. So if we think about, well, how am I going to make sure that people know that I, you know, care about each of them individually? What are some of the ways that I can do that, you know? We have a, a manager on our team who does this really quite beautifully by checking in with folks physically on our in-office days, right? So for our team, we have Wednesdays are, everybody's in the office. Like our boss said that from the start, he's like, we'll look at hybrid arrangements, we can pick different days, but I have some parameters. One, we have to have somebody in the office every day. So we got to figure that out, right? And he put that to us to say like, how could we figure this out? You guys figure it out, see if you can make it work where we can get somebody's in the office every day. And we have several people that are in every day. There's a, a little sprinkling of us each day. But Wednesdays was his non-negotiable, like every Wednesday, I want everyone in the office. And at first, we were like, huh, but you know what? Now we've really seen the benefit of that as a strategy because it helps us to think about proactively the ways in which we are engaging with each other. And so like I was saying, one of my managers is really good about walking around and just saying hello, how are you? What's top of the mind today? And just being physically present to prevent some of those feelings from coming up. Yeah. And another thing that we want to do to really mitigate is act quickly, right? So if there are situations that pop up where you're aware that, you know, maybe there's some real unhappiness or people are, are feeling slighted in some way, what are some ways that we can surface and talk through issues, create that problem-solving environment that will help us, excuse me, to act quickly so that we can mitigate potential harm? That's one of the most effective strategies, right? Thanks, Brian. Yeah, for helping to ensure success. Because when things are allowed to sort of move on and move on, it's like that snowball, right? It's going down the hill and it gets bigger as it collects more snow. So we want to make sure, I know that's not exactly the analogy for Florida, but a sandball, a beach sandball, how about that? We don't have those. So you want to also think about what's within your control as a manager or leader, right? So creating your own agreements, your own parameters, like our boss did, you know, he said, Wednesdays, non-negotiable. What's okay for you? What's not okay? Where are those parameters for your team? What's open for debate and discussion? What's not, right? Get really clear on that. And then, you know, maybe you tell your team that you want them to, that you want to be able to reach out to them. Maybe this is important to you. Like, I want to be able to reach out to you instantly if you're not in a meeting and you're remote at any given time. Like that's a parameter I want to set out to my team. So let's say that something comes up and I reach out to you and I can't get a hold of you. Okay, well, that's one time. So let's say something else comes up later and I reach out and I can't get a hold of you. Probably that second time, I'm going to nip it in the bud, right? I'm just going to have a conversation. So I reached out to you a couple of times. This is what we agreed is that I would be able to reach people. I know things come up, so we're never a hundred percent. But, you know, let's have a conversation around, you know, what we could do to make sure. And if it's just like, oh, well, this came up and that came up, okay, we've talked about it, we've agreed this needs to happen and we're going to move forward. And then you monitor that performance, right? Absolutely. So the University of Florida has developed some policy to guide alternate workplace agreements. And these have to be completed, you know, for most employees who are working remotely, for any employees who are working remotely, but in most instances, I should say. This policy does include a list of considerations for both the employee and the supervisor to review and discuss. And, you know, your college or department, I know many have, may have developed additional guidelines, as I mentioned, for remote work. So if you're not sure if there are any in place right now, that's probably a first step is to check in and see, you know, with your leadership or your HR liaison, do we have any sort of additional guidelines in place for alternate work or remote work arrangements for our college or our department? Now, this isn't necessary if you have an employee who just has that occasional need to, you know, work remotely based on a situation that pops up. So, you know, this week I've got this situation and I need to work remotely on this day and that day. You as a manager can approve those, you know, sort of temporary flexibility arrangements. The general rule of thumb, and I say general because it's not hard and fast, but like if there is, you know, a continuation where you're having to really make these exceptions and allow for alternate work location for more than a pay period, you know, if it's going on for a little while, at that point, you should probably really consider other options, right? And so when we look at eligibility for our remote work location agreement, it's open to all academic personnel, teams, USPS and OPS. Of course, if I'm an academic personnel and I have to teach an in-person class, right? That's part of the agreement. I need to still teach an in-person class, right? So there are some ways to really create this agreement specifically for the individual. And this is available to everyone immediately upon a hire, you know, as long as that work duty permits. So those situations, those work jobs that we can do in this remote way. Supervisors are not obligated to provide a remote work location agreement. And UF has the right to refuse or terminate one that's not working, you know? So you as a manager actually have quite a bit of leeway here as far as, you know, really making sure that you set the employee and the team up for success. And if things aren't working out and we've tried to work through it, there are, you know, easily you can take this agreement back and say, this isn't working, here's what's going on and we're going to move back this direction. It's also important to note that it's not a benefit, it's not a term or condition of employment. And so it's important to keep in mind that, you know, an agreement such as this should really be mutually beneficial, both to the employee and to the organization. That's something that we want to just kind of keep in mind, right? We like to think of this as a handshake, right, between the employee and UF. And it helps us when we have this in place, it really helps you, it gives a lot of detailed information around clarifying those conditions for the arrangement, right? When you're working from home, where will you be at? How will you access technology? What will this look like? What will that look like? It gives you all of those specific parameters in writing. And it also helps to establish those basic expectations, right? So keep in mind, as you consider options for your team, that this can be revoked at any time, right? I know several units who've, as some people mentioned in the trial period right there, tested it out for a while. You know, maybe you pick a timeframe and say, okay, we're going to test this out for the next couple of months. And as you evaluate the fit for the employee, the team and the work, you can collect information about what's working, what's not working, work through those issues, again, with that growth mindset and that learning process front and center, and discuss long-term possibilities. And maybe you discover after, you know, say, oh, we're going to do this for the next couple of months. And maybe you discover, you know, a month in, that it's crashing and burning for a particular employee and there are a lot of red flags. You don't have to wait the full three months that you set originally. You can say, okay, we tried it. It got this far and here are some of the concerns and you have some of those options as well. Another important factor to consider is the team culture, right? So we want to make sure, every team has an existing culture and it's really, you could describe it as like how we get things done. If we're going to explore ways to be more flexible with work arrangements for our team, we also have to identify the ways that we will continue to communicate and collaborate with each other, you know? On our team, we have an agreement to be in, like I said, on Wednesdays, that gives us that at least one day when we're guaranteed to physically see each other. We just had this moment this morning where we had a, I call it a family portrait moment, where you have several people that are wearing colors that are very similar, like a family portrait. And so we took a moment to have a little fun and take some pictures of each other and post them in our team chat. It was a nice way for me especially, because I tend to be more of an extrovert. And so when I am spending a lot of time either, you know, on my own in the office or on my own at home, it tends to drain my energy level a little bit, so that was really helpful. On other days, you know, we use teams to regularly update each other on our statuses throughout the day, you know? So if I have to run to the post office and I'm going to use my lunchtime to do that or whatever, I'm going to be off the line from, you know, 11 to 12 today instead of my normal lunchtime because I'm going to run an errand. So we update each other, send those instant messages through our dedicated channel that's used just for that. We also have a team fun channel on our team's account. And this has been a really a great place where we can spread a little cheer, celebrate birthdays or other special occasions, share hobbies and interests. People will post things about stuff that they're doing outside of work. It's been a great way for us to learn more about each other and has really helped to bond our team together. Now, this doesn't happen overnight, okay? It, it's not something that you can just put in place tomorrow and suddenly we have this amazing team culture. But with time and continued investment, it is possible to create a culture with remote work arrangements that is both supportive and effective and increasing that collaboration and that connection. If you have team members who work together on projects, maybe you put it to them to say, okay, if we're going to consider this, you guys need to problem solve. How will you still work on these projects with distance as a factor? Come up with some different options, some different strategies, and then let's sit down and talk about it, right? Engaging the team in that discussion increases their commitment to the agreement. It also helps you to establish the metrics that you'll monitor as you move forward to measure effectiveness, right? So if you guys said you're going to do XYZ as you manage this project and that project is not moving forward as we had hoped that it would, maybe we look back at some of those agreements and say, okay, what has or hasn't been happening? And what changes need to exist, right? Problem solving early as a team, as I mentioned early, is, is really one of the most effective strategies to ensure that it's effective. And, you know, it is And you know, it establishes that we're all in this together, working to find that best way to both allow flexibility because we want that. But also to main, maintain that high level of productivity in what we do. And if you discover that things aren't working, um, you know, maybe that's a time where you do need to bring it back to the table. I know um, there have been some units that have, you know, went to that quick shift of remote work. And one unit I worked with recently, um, they decided to adopt a hybrid work schedule. Right on the heels of, you know, everybody being fully remote. And unfortunately, I I think they probably didn't come together like this and talk about some of those communication and structural things. That really, you know, need to be in place for this to be effective. And the team really started to struggle with effective communication across the board. There were numerous customer complaints of poor service. A customer would call or email somebody on the team and they would get a notice that it was their remote day. They were unavailable because it was their remote day. So this really created a negative experience for the customer and further delayed their processes from being completed. It also had a very negative impact on the team culture as communication was really severely lacking. So we want to make sure that we avoid those types of situations by thinking through some of those communication channels and structures early on. And problem-solving issues as they arise quickly. Have any of you ever heard of that phrase, management by walking around? It's pretty common, it's been around a long time. It basically refers to the importance of your physical presence as a manager in the physical um, in the environment that you work, right? So in the office, this could look like me coming by and saying hello or asking how things are or chatting in the lounge, right? If all or part of your team will be absent from the physical office at times or all the time, right? What does the equivalent of managing by walking around in a virtual environment look like? What are some ways that you could still do those types of things when people are at a distance? If you have some ideas, feel free to put them into the chat. I know some that I have seen that have been really effective are, you know, building in regular informal check-ins with groups. So on our team, one of our groups has a standing meeting every Friday. It's like end of the week and this is the time where they really connect to problem solve and talk about their work. Without a structured meeting agenda that like dictates, we're going to talk about this and then this and then this. So it gives us that space. You call them scrum meetings, Natalie, that's cool, great, yeah. It gives you this space, you could expect it, it's regular. If I'm really struggling with something, I have this psychological safety to just bring it up at this time. Because that's really what this time is for, right? Oh, I love that, Brian, pop quiz via team, good strategy. Keep putting them in there. I love to see what you all are doing to kind of problem solve around some of these things. And of course, individual check-ins, regular check-ins with your employees is a very effective strategy that I would use as a non-negotiable. If if it were me to any management situation involving remote or hybrid work. So regular check-ins, you know, weekly, that's the the rule of thumb is that if I could check in with you weekly, even if they're a quick, you know, thirty-minute update where we run through things. You know, what's top of the mind for me? What am I working on? How am I doing with those things? Questions that you have for me as your manager, you know, as my manager. And if we go back to that scarf model, right? And think about that relatedness piece. These opportunities to have more regular and frequent check-ins and interactions with each other is a necessity in order for us to feel connected to each other. So we can't ignore those factors, we really do need to pay attention. And think about it, your team might have some great ways to strategize around that as well. Many organizations, including groups here at UF, are finding that remote work arrangements increase productivity and job satisfaction. However, we have to be really mindful of a few factors that could also have a big impact on our employees' stress level and overall well-being. So we don't want to lose all of that productivity and job satisfaction that we're aiming for with flexible work arrangements. By impacting folks' well-being with the negative impacts of stress, right? More often, we are starting to hear that employees are working many more hours when they're remote versus being in the office. So for you as a manager, how are you going to know when those sorts of things are happening? What are the types of questions that you can ask in those check-ins to help to manage that piece? Because you won't see them, they're not physically in front of you. They could be working from seven in the morning to seven at night and you may not know, right? As much as we worry about people not working, I think it's also important to worry about people working too much, right? This could have a very negative impact on the person and also on the work as well. It can impact their ability to make decisions. It might decrease their creative thinking and their problem solving. And it also can have a very negative impact on our moods as well. And all of those factors can in turn impact our performance and how well we're able to communicate and interact with others. So want to make sure that we encourage people to take breaks, enjoy your lunchtime, log off. Chat from time to time, show that understanding. And for you as a manager, you know, really thinking about if you notice signs of struggle. What are those ways that we can lean in and pay attention to it and offer support and guidance to help them to manage and work through? So today we explored some remote work options, including ways that we can think about that future workforce and plan for it and strategies to support success. If you have any additional questions, I would invite those in the chat. We have two more webinars lined up in the Managing Remote Work series. Next Wednesday, we'll take a deeper dive into some of those best practices for managing a hybrid team. And then the following Wednesday, we'll look at ways to build a strong remote work culture. We hope you can join us for these as well and encourage you to register if for some reason you're unable to attend. We will follow up with an email including the webinar recording link. And thank you for your time today. Feel free to reach out to us if you have any questions or would like someone to walk you through a situation uh, more specifically. You can reach out to me, Becky Younglove, my contact information is at the top there. I also have some colleagues on the line from our classification and compensation team, Christina Molemaster and Malia York, who can provide some. Specific support around these topics and especially that remote workplace agreement that's managed through their office. We didn't go into a lot of specifics today around some of those less typical situations like. Request to work outside of the US or ADA type requests, things like that. And there are guidelines in place to help um, work through those situations. So the best thing to do is reach out for some support for those unique factors. We put a survey link in the chat and we would love to get your input on how we can improve. And if there were things that really um, were helpful in the webinar today, I'll also send a follow-up email. We don't share the slides from the presentation, but I'll share a link to the recording, so you'll have that. And then I also have um, a handout with some guiding questions from those areas that we went through that you can use as sort of a workbook. To start thinking about some of these factors wherever you're at in that process. Thank you so much, we look forward to seeing you at future webinars. Have a wonderful day.